All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being here. We will now call this meeting to order. First, we will begin with roll call of Commissioner District One.
DeAndre Knoxen, District One.
Felix Herrera, District Two.
Alma Bowie, Commissioner at Large.
Dedrick Johnson, Mayor.
Abel Garza, Commissioner at Large.
Jamie Clark, District Four.
All right, let the record reflect that we do have a quorum present, six of the seven commission members here. Also, we will now begin with our invocation. We'll have our very own Mr. John Branson, who will lead us in the invocation, following back. We will have Commissioner DeAndre Knoxen lead us in the pledges. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. If you're able, please stand and join me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come to you now. We are grateful for the many, many blessings that you have bestowed on each and every one of us and on this great community of Texas City. Father, we ask at this time that you will bless Mayor Johnson, the city commissioners, and that their actions and their deeds this evening will be pleasing to you and that we will do your will, Lord, that they will do the will that you have given us to do. Lord, we pray for your blessings for the poor, the sick, the friendless, and for those that are suffering, and ask that you will bless each and every one in need and that you will heal their maladies. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings that you have bestowed on us. We pray all these things in Jesus' precious and holy name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in pledge.
Let our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation of your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas flag.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you very much, Mr. Branson. Prayer. Thank you, Commissioner Knoxen, for leading us in the pledges.
Sir.
At this point, we are up to proclamations and presentations. We have just a couple of proclamations to date. Happy to announce that it is Motorcycle Awareness Month.
Bless you.
Blessing.
Big sneeze. It is Motorcycle Awareness Month and the month of April, and I do have a proclamation that I would like to present. And if we had a representative from the motorcycle group that would like to come on up and receive this proclamation, you can do so. Actually, you guys can stand right there at the podium and I'll bring that to you because we're going to ask you to have a few words and tell us a little bit about yourselves in just a second. From the office of the mayor, this proclamation reads as follows: Whereas motorcycles are a popular and economical mode of transportation for millions of Americans, providing mobility, freedom, and enjoyment to riders across our nation. And it is essential to recognize the unique vulnerabilities faced by motorcyclists on our roadways and to promote awareness of their presence among all motorists. And whereas motorcycle safety, education, training, and awareness campaigns are crucial components in reducing the number of motorcycle-related accidents, injuries, and fatalities. And whereas by fostering a culture of mutual respect and understanding between motorcyclists and other road users, we can work together to create safer roads for everyone. Whereas the American Motorcyclist Association, the AMA, plays a vital role in supporting and advancing the interests of motorcyclists in the United States while also promoting the enjoyment and freedom of motorcycling as a recreational activity and mode of transportation. Now, therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Texas City and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Motorcycle Awareness Month. I urge all citizens to join me in promoting awareness of motorcycle safety and in supporting initiatives aimed at reducing motorcycle accidents and fatalities on our roadways. In testimony whereof, witness my hand and the seal of the City of Texas City on this first day of May 2024. And this is signed by myself as mayor and attested to by our city secretary, Ms. Ramari Lee. Congratulations. And if one of your representatives would like to have a few words, you can certainly do so on behalf of your group.
Thank you very much. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
So tell us who you are and tell us about your biker club and what motorcycling means to you.
My name is Arthur Ruiz. I'm a B.O.I., born and raised in Galveston. I moved to Texas City about ten years ago after the storm. I joined this club because they do a lot of charity work, which is what we like to do. And the club was established in 2007, so they've been around a while. I'm the president of the Galveston County Chapter, which has been around maybe seven years. And we do everything from breast cancer awareness to the Shriners. Ronald McDonald House in Galveston is one of our big support groups that we support. And we have four chapters now. Started out just with Harris County, and now there's Harris County, Brazoria County, Gulf Coast, and Galveston County. We have a total of maybe seventy members. And we all ride.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for being here. We really appreciate that.
And we're the Warriors Bikers for Charity. That's our...
Warriors Bikers for Charity?
Yes.
All right.
Great. Great. Thank y'all for doing that.
Thank y'all. I know we have several law enforcement and people in our first responders who ride bikes and our very own Commissioner Knoxen is part of a bikers association and is very prevalent around town. So thank you for bringing Motorcycle Awareness Month to our attention. Next, we have a proclamation also that will be presented because this is the 55th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week. So which one of our professional municipal clerks will be accepting this? Mr. Ramari Lee. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world, and the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas municipal clerk provides the professional link between citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community and continually strive to improve the administration of affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is fitting and proper to recognize the invaluable contributions of municipal clerks and to express our gratitude for their tireless effort to uphold the public trust and advance the common good. Now, therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Texas City, on behalf of this commission, do hereby proclaim May 5th through 11th as the 55th Annual Professional Municipal Clerk's Appreciation Week. And further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk, Ms. Ramari Lee, and to all other professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. In testimony whereof, witness my hand and the seal of the city on this first day of May, signed by Dedrick Johnson and attested to by our municipal clerk, Ms. Ramari Lee. Is it fair for you to sign your own signature? Come on up here, Ms. Ramari. Ms. Ramari, would you like to have a few words about what municipal clerks represent?
Get even, man.
She's being modest today, but Ramari has received awards and state certifications and all types of stuff that represent the City of Texas City. I tell people all the time, we have one of the best city secretaries in the state. She is responsible. Of course, this is one of her busiest weeks as the municipal clerk's office, city secretary's office, is responsible for local elections as well as public information requests and many other duties that she has. She's done an outstanding job here with the City of Texas City, and we're very fortunate to have her. All right. That's the end of the proclamations and presentations, but we are now up to the portion of our agenda where we will receive reports. And today, we will have Mr. Jeffrey Miller of our finance department. He's our interim finance director. He's going to give us financial quarterly report. Financial quarterly reports. I think he's going to give us two reports at once. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and commissioners, this is the first and second quarterly report for the FY 24 year. Municipal investments are regulated by Chapter 2256 of the Government Code. Among other requirements, the statute prescribes types of securities, which are fixed income, investment objectives, safety, liquidity, and yield. We memorize that one. Investment policy, an annual review, and also quarterly reporting, which is why we are here tonight. This slide is a five-year look back at treasury rates. If you have observed mortgage rates at all, you know they've been climbing pretty aggressively. It all stems from the Fed and the U.S. Treasuries in particular. I picked off two dates, July 31st, 2020, at a 0.55%. Now, that's a ten-year investment, and they were getting fifty-five basis points, not even a percent. And October 19th, 2023, that rate climbed, that's that peak there on the right, to 4.98%, almost 5%, a nine-fold increase in three years. So it's been an interesting environment for investing. And the other thing at work here is the yield curve. We've got an inverted curve. What that means is we get less interest for longer-term securities. Normally, you're rewarded for running them out ten years, twenty years. In this case, you're actually penalized. So others are encouraged, or the market is encouraging us to invest in the short term, to maximize our yields. This is our current concentrations by institution of the city's portfolio with thirty-eight percent in Hilltop, Oseak at fifty percent, and Texas First Bank. They have a high-yield money market account at ten percent. And actually, that high-yield rate has been very good. Okay, first quarter activity. The 930-23 balance I booked at amortized cost. That means I added about a hundred thousand to that balance in case you try and tie that number into the June report. I did that because I'm old school and I like things booked at amortized cost, which is normally the presentation. Note positive change in market value of about a million dollars. I think previous reports, you saw negative amounts because they were out several years in duration of investments. Now, if that portfolio is shortening in time, those rates are going to come up. Weighted average is going to go down. The value of the portfolio diminished as they do this time of year. You typically get property taxes in January, February, and then that lasts us all year long. So August, September, October, those months, we start consuming, operations starts consuming the balance. This is the various benchmark rates that's called for on your investment policy compared to the city return. Note the weighted average maturity of a hundred and fifty days. This is as of the first report. You're going to see it come down considerably on the March report. Next slide is the composition of securities. It's just a pie chart. Agencies at seventy-two percent. Money market funds at twenty-four percent. Treasuries are four percent there. The next slide is just a graphical bar chart display of the various rates, the benchmark rates and portfolios, balances those. Second quarterly report. Now we're caught up. Positive change in market value of 582,000. Again, the portfolio's shortening in duration. You're going to see those values come up. The overall gain is 1.4 million in this quarter. And again, the benchmark rates in the investment policy compared to the city's return. In this case, it was, if you look at 324, it's 2.7% versus the last quarter at 2.18. And then that weighted average maturity has gone from a hundred and fifty days to eighty-eight days. There are approximately five months, three months. It's shortening up, and you're going to see those rates go up. The composition of the portfolio, March 31st, agencies at forty-eight percent. Money markets at forty-eight percent, and treasuries at four. And the same as the December report, the graphical on the benchmark rates compared to the city's rate of return. Still falling behind, and it will fall behind for several quarters. But it's going to be catching up, and it's going to be catching up rather rapidly. This is holdings as of March 31st. Hilltop is at 37.1 million. These are institutions that hold the city's money. Oseak is at 49 million, and Texas First Bank is at a little better than a million. This is an investment report at CARER. It's how I set your investments at 930. Treasury's at 3.9. That'll be the mature value. Agency is at 46.5, money markets at almost 46 million. Last slide, you made it. This is the subsequent activity. We've moved March 8th, 22.8 million, and T-bills with an effective rate of 5.3%. And the 30 million in T-bells with an effective rate of 5.2%. It's a six-month and then a three-month in preparation for your next finance director when he comes on board. That's the end of my report. Do you have any questions?
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Mr. Miller?
Thank you.
Well, whenever that does happen, Mr. Miller, you've done a great job in helping us prepare for the onboarding of the next person.
Appreciate the opportunity, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have the reports from Texas City's annual financial report. We're going to go ahead and, Commissioner, I'm asking if we can table that. Our auditors needed just a little bit, requested a little bit more time to get back with us on that final report. So on 5C, we will move on to another report by Athletic Division from our Recreation and Tourism Department. We'll hear from Mr. Jamarcus.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I'm Jamarcus Thomas. I'm the athletics coordinator for the Parks, Rec, and Tourism Department. Today, I will be going over some of our programs, some of the things we offer for youth sports and things of that nature. So some of those sports that we offer are tennis, volleyball, basketball, track and field, and pickleball. So for our tennis program, we actually have two different types of programs. We have the after-school program and a summer program. Our summer program in the year of 2023, '24 school year, we had thirty-two participants. Some of those were repeats, so they come actually pretty much every month throughout the school year. That schedule runs from August to May, and it kind of mirrors the Texas City ISD schedule. For our age groups that we offer, from six to eighteen, those classes range from beginner, intermediate, and advanced sections, and that fee is $20 per month. For our summer program, in summer 2023, we had thirty-four participants, and our classes ran from June to August, with registration beginning in April. Those classes begin at 8:00 a.m. with beginners. The intermediate section was 9:00 a.m., advanced was 10:00 a.m., and that age group is six through eighteen as well. And this summer, we actually had an opportunity to participate with the Galveston Parks and Rec tennis team. We had a few matches at Menorah Park this year, so that was a big plus for our kids. Our kids are excited to go back this year, so hopefully we can make this an annual thing every summer. Our next program that we offer is our youth girls volleyball program. In the fall of 2023, we had ninety-three participants. Our league schedule ran from August to November. The cost of that program was $60, and our age group that we offered that to was six through fifteen. They had practices and games two times a week. Our biggest program that we offer is youth basketball. A lot of you all may have heard and actually came to games or had family members that participate in our youth basketball program. So in the winter league that we just had last year, we had 285 participants. Those age ranges are from four years old to fifteen. And that program cost was seventy bucks as well. And the games, games and practices go from December to March. Our summer track program, which is currently open for registration, however, this year, we're probably at about sixty right now, but last year we had sixty as well. The age ranges are five through eighteen. That registration fee is thirty, $30 as well, and that program starts from May and ends in July. That schedule includes circuit meets in Pasadena, La Porte, and Baytown. And we do have practices at Texas City High School from 5:30 to 7:30. We do have post-meets as well. You can go ahead and go to the next slide. So this past year, we actually hosted the Region One TAF meet. It was probably about fifteen entries. Those kids range from all over this region, from Conroe to Baytown to La Porte to Pasadena to Beaumont and Lake Jackson as well. That was hosted at Texas City High School on July 11th. And like I said, we had about fifteen hundred entries. Those kids that qualified moved on to what they call the TAF State Games. The State Games is basically a state track meet that those kids go to and compete with kids all over Texas. All right, this program is actually new. We don't really offer a league just yet, but we will be offering those soon. Pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in the United States. The growth population rate is 36.5 million in 2023 and increased rate over the last three years of 223.5%. We do have equipment at all of our centers. That would be Carver Center, Sanders Center, and the Lawrence Center as well. This program also has free play at the Lawrence Center. We have two courts. If you see here, this picture is a picture of some people that actually play in our center. They come every morning from probably about eight till eleven, and they just have a good time. In the fall, we will be offering a league for adults. So if you know anyone that would like to play that's interested, we will be having that information available soon. And then we also have outside courts at Westview Park near 16th Street North, if you're interested in playing outside. All right, here are some numbers to compare to years past. The biggest number that I want to focus on is the 285 for youth basketball. I want to highlight that because we had a drop of numbers, but it was good. And it may have been bad, but it was pretty much good because the quality of our program actually increased. We had a great season this past season. We had parents, coaches, and players on board. We really didn't have too many incidents, but I can attribute that to those numbers. Those numbers possibly went down because they had several other leagues that started. I believe there was a league in Lamarck, there was a league in Hitchcock. So some of those kids that we lost, maybe a hundred and a half, may have went to those leagues. So that number, yeah, I know it looks kind of low, but it actually kind of helped us out with the quality of our program. So here are some of our memorandum of understanding, youth partners. These organizations use our fields throughout their season. These are some of those leagues, which is Texas City Little League. They are at Goddard Park. Texas City Girls Youth Softball, they're at Tarpey Fields. Galveston County Baseball Association. This is a new organization that they play their games at Carver Center on the west side of town. And then we have Galveston County Youth Soccer Association, which they use Bay Street Fields, Osborne Field, and Fatima Fields behind the church. Here are those facilities that I just mentioned. At Carver Park, we do have an adult softball field and one little league field. At Tarpey, we have four softball fields, which is utilized by Texas City Girls Youth Softball. At Goddard Park, we do have five fields. We have one pony field for the older kids. We have a minor, a major, and two Pee-wee fields in the back, and that is utilized by Texas City Little League. Other inventory that we do have that includes those fields are seventeen softball fields, slash baseball fields, one football field, three multipurpose fields, several soccer fields, five gymnasiums, eleven concession stands, that's three inside, eight outside, and one pavilion. And here's a picture of Carlos Garza Sports Complex. If you've ever been out there, that's the overhead view. That's how it looks at the top, and it actually pictures those things that I just mentioned. All right, so Civic Rec is a program that we use to... All right. So Civic Rec is a program that we use to complete all of our registrations. If you know anyone that want to sign up for any, any sport, or if they want to come and get a membership from the Lorry, this is a system that we use. You can scan this QR code, you can create a profile, and you're able to register participants, and you're also able to, like I say, get a membership, but you'll have to come in and finish your membership at the Lorry Fitness Center. If you have any questions, you can contact this phone number, and our front desk staff will be able to assist you. Again, this is the system that we use. This QR code is very valuable. If you know anyone that wants to register, have them scan it. Questions?
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Thomas?
Just a comment, Mayor. I mean, this is really a lot that y'all do. I can't thank you enough for all you do for the kids. This is what we needed for Texas City, and you guys are stepping up to the plate really well. And you also need to kind of recognize, your tennis coach, he's been around. I think I took lessons from him when I was six. How long has he been out there? How long has Charlie Brooks been out there?
So Coach Brooks has been with the city, I want to say thirty-five years or forty, somewhere in there. Yeah, he's, everyone that comes into the Lorry Fitness Center, he knows him. He either taught their kids or taught them tennis, or he taught them in school in Galveston. So, yeah, he's a, he's a big part in our tennis program.
Thirty-five years. I'm, yeah, I'm four. That's about right.
By the way, he's actually, I think he's eighty this year, so. Yeah, he's probably be mad at me. Thank you.
Thanks for what y'all do.
Thank you. Our Parks and Recreation Department has always done this as far as provided the youth sports and development of our youth through recreational activities, and, and they're only growing. They're still continuing to grow, and, and the offerings that we have for our community, so.
And very, very affordable, too.
Yeah. Oh, extremely affordable. There's, there's no place in the county that you can get what we give our youth for the, for the buck. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Appreciate your work.
Yep.
And Mr. Thomas, he stepped out. Next on the agenda, we will open up our public hearing. We will have a public hearing and consider the rezoning of District A, which is a single-family residential to District One, planned unit development for the development of a subdivision in accordance with the general plan approved by the City Commission, and to complete the process of rezoning the Vita-Custerra subdivision in Texas City, located south of the Pearl Brook subdivision and Twenty-Fifth Avenue North Extension and west of State Highway Three. We will open that public hearing. Ms. Golden?
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, Lori, do we have a map we can put up? So this is the Vita-Custerra subdivision. It is located off of Highway Three. Just, I'll get my directions right here. It's off Highway Three. And it, it, it's actually, a section's already been built, and a second section is, is under construction. What I believe happened was, this is one of the first areas that went through the planned unit development process back many, many years ago with Texas City. And I think maybe the city was kind of still learning some of that process. The area was annexed into the MUD, the Municipal Utility District, and as a condition for the city's consent to that, it was supposed to also set up a PUD, a Planned Unit Development. The Pearl Brook area is, is also in MUD sixty-six, and so it was all being treated at the same time. And I believe what happened is when they annexed, or when the rezoning went through for Pearl Brook, they may have thought this area was included, but when we looked at the legal description, it clearly was not. And so, it, it was in fact annexed into the MUD, and so they want to be able to get reimbursed for the money they've spent making the improvements, and so they need to complete the process of rezoning. And so, they've done everything in accordance with the planned unit development as if it had been rezoned. They are, you know, building it out in accordance with the standards. We just now have it all documented. There have been a couple of things that have changed. The original plan back a long time ago was going to develop about two hundred and twenty-five lots. That number's actually down to a little over two hundred, maybe about two hundred and four, but that's because they had to do some additional detention, and then they've also turned some of the lots into park area. But it is all consistent with the standard that was envisioned then, and that has been exercised throughout the platting process with the planning board so far. The planning board considered the case, voted unanimously to recommend it. The zoning commission considered the case, voted unanimously to recommend it. Had over two hundred properties that were notified of the public hearing with the zoning commission, and there were no comments for or against that were received. And then, of course, this public hearing has also been advertised in accordance with the requirements of state law, and we've not received any comments for or against it.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Ms. Golden, you've seen quite a few maps here, but those maps were not only Vita-Custerra, but some of the surrounding areas that potentially are part of that PUD. But you've heard Ms. Golden, if you have any questions, let us know. If there's anyone here in the audience who's here to speak maybe in favor of this redistricting, I'm sorry, this rezoning of District A to District I planned unit development, if anyone is here to speak in favor of that? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition, to speak against of this rezoning? District A to this planned unit development? All right, thank you. Commissioners, what's your approval?
Move to close the public hearing?
I second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Jamie Clark to close the public hearing. That has been seconded by Commissioner Felix Herrera. All in favor of that, say, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is now closed. Move on to Item Seven A, which is the preliminary zoning approval. We will consider and take action on the Vita-Custerra PUD, PUD application and PUD documents to satisfy the zoning requirements of the development agreement located south of Pearl Brook subdivision and Twenty-Fifth Avenue North Extension and west of State Highway Three.
I move to approve.
Second.
Ms. Golden, is this, is this one of three, or we waive those, the, the readings on those?
So, the preliminary zoning approval is just that. It's preliminary zoning approval. They will have twelve months to then come in and show they pulled a building permit, and that's the point at which it will actually be an ordinance.
Got it.
Changing the zone. So, this is the first step, and we'll probably be coming back pretty soon with the ordinance to make it permanent.
You are correct. Thank you for that reminder. A, a motion has been made by Commissioner Clark to approve this ordinance, to approve this rezoning, I'm sorry, that has been seconded by Commissioner Herrera. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Ms. Golden. We're now to public comments. In public comments, I only had one person who has submitted a request to address the commission, and we're going to ask Ms. Laura to come forward. Ms. Laura, when you come forward, state your full name and tell us why you want to address the commission and what that's about.
Hello.
How you doing? Pull that mic down to you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Loetta, and I'm a resident of Texas City. I'm a BOI as well. This is my daughter, Catalaia. She's in third grade at Cuarto Elementary. And we just wanted to address everyone. I got in contact with Ms. Kimberly Laird, and she let me know about the thing tonight, this event. So, we kind of just wanted to let everyone know what Lemonade Day is about, and that it is coming up this Saturday. Do you want to say hi? So, this, she's, this is our first time doing Lemonade Day. She signed up for Girl Scouts this year, and they actually let us know that this is a thing. I've seen it before, but haven't really known what it is. So, Lemonade Day is all about having the young youth become entrepreneurs for a day. So, this really takes a lot of planning. They have a whole book that they do. They read about what it takes to be an entrepreneur. So, it's really good exposure for them at a young age to see what it means to be a business owner. So, Catalaia, she's completed almost all of her booklet. You have to take into account your supplies, what you're going to spend, what you need to make in order to make that money and make extra money. So, yeah, so we signed up. We're all about the community. We love doing things, helping people, volunteering. So, we just wanted to let y'all know, let the community know. There is Lemonade Day. It's Galveston County. So, it's not just Texas City, but all of Galveston County. It's taking place this Saturday, May fourth. And our lemonade stand is actually going to be at Foodarama off of Sixth Street, the Old Food King, and we're going to be there from eleven to four this Saturday. But there should be all lemonade young entrepreneurs out and about this Saturday, so representing Galveston County.
All right.
Best of luck to you.
Thank you for y'all's time.
Thank you very much.
And thank you to Ms. Laird for letting us.
Jennifer Laird.
Thank you. Thank you.
Jennifer Laird told me about this earlier today, and thank you very much. We have the flyer. I'm going to pass this flyer back to you because I want you to put this in the lobby, and people can, can check it out on their way out. Catalaia, hope you have a great Lemonade Day at Foodarama, and we appreciate our corporate partners in the community for assisting our young entrepreneurs. As Mom stated, this is a Galveston County-wide affair, so there'll be lemonade stands set up in many different subdivisions and grocery stores and things like that. Want to stop by and support them. It'll be a great day Saturday, and everybody who's running around voting, because that's Election Day, you can stop and take a break and get you a fresh glass of lemonade. Thank you again so much.
Thank you. Good luck to you.
She's wearing her lemonade shirt.
Okay, yeah. At this point, we're at the consent agenda. Commissioners, you have, before you, consent agenda items nine A and B for your approval or for your consideration. If you'd like any of those pulled for further discussion, you may do so at this time.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Clark to approve this consent agenda, seconded by Commissioner Herrera. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now to regular items ten A, we will consider and take action on ordinance number twenty-two-four dash fourteen, amending chapter ninety-six, fire prevention and protection fireworks. It's related to the adoption of the two thousand twenty-four International Fire Code and including amendments of certain sections. Fire Chief, Mr. David Zachrow.
Good afternoon, or evening, I guess it is. So, you may remember last winter, we adopted all the electric codes, the funk codes, and all those other codes that go along with this family. The fire code was a little late in coming out, so we, it recently got released, and we went through and checked all our amendments that we made through ordinances to make sure the numbers line up and the language is still there, so we, we got through all that. And we have added some to, on battery storage systems for allowing for spacing between fifteen, a minimum of fifteen foot, and a roadway around the perimeter of such construction so that we have access with our engines. We, we don't have off-road fire trucks at heart, so we need some access, and a couple of different accesses so we can stay off wind. Other than that, the amendments for the sprinkler systems and the stairwells going into apartment complexes being made of metal, that wood, and things like that are, would stay in existence. This will be the first of three readings.
Commissioners, do you have any questions of Chief Zachrow?
Just getting up to date with the international code, pretty much.
And with, we're trying to stay with the fire code, electric code, and building codes and all that that we use in the city all the same year, so it makes it easier on everybody. We just know what year to go to and look at the family.
Motion to approve, Mayor.
I second.
Motion has been made to approve by Commissioner Garza, seconded by Commissioner Knox. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Chief, as much as those fire trucks cost, they ought to be able to fly. Don't give me any ideas. You said no off-road, but they ought to be in the sky right about now. Thank you very much for that. We are now updated with that, and this is, again, I believe that was the first reading. Am I correct? It's okay. So, we're up to commissioners' comments. We'll start with Commissioner Knox. Do you have any comments for us?
I have no comment.
Commissioner Herrera?
No comment today. Thank you.
Mayor Proton Bowie?
I do have a comment. Commissioner Clark and myself attended the Rotary Meeting this past Tuesday. We needed to take a break, and we were glad that we did because the Rotary, Rotary Club had a very successful golf tournament last week. They made lots of money to give back, and they had nothing but good words to say about our course and the entire operation. So, Mike, just want to let you know Dennis got lots of compliments that day. You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowie. Commissioner Garza?
In conjunction with that, we have the Badges, Blues and Badges Turn, Golf Tournament coming up as well, right? It was rescheduled from tomorrow until next, the twenty-first? Perfect. That's going to be a good one, too.
So, I got moved to the twenty-first?
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Clark?
No, sir. No comment.
All right. I don't have any comments as well, so what we'll do is we would have a blanket request for all of our city staff. If you all have any comments, you may stand and make those loud and clear where you are. Ms. Lowen, our library director?
I'll be very brief. This summer, our library is mostly gambling to be a distribution center for the movie Kids' PAX program, which is a little food for childrens this summer. The applications are now starting today in the library, and the program provides a magic of three months a week, four, ten weeks, from June third until August tenth. That gives you the library at the information desk now. And one more thing, May fourth is going to be a very, a city. We're having our first-ever movie event in the library. We just got a streaming license, and we aren't allowed, per the regulations of the license, to broadcast the title of the movie outside the building, but it is May the fourth. There are lightsabers involved. Called Revel Nation, I think it is, and they volunteer, and they dress up in Star Wars costumes. And then we collaborate for other, we have power for the movie for photo ops for anyone that wants to show up, and we'll be staying, don't forget, we can do it afterwards as well for photos. So, once you finish filming, you've got your lemonade.
Well, it's late. At some point, you have to stop by and touch a truck, but I think Kristen's going to tell us. Not touch a truck, but put your eyes on some classic cars. So, Kristen will tell us about that.
So, it's lemonade, Star Wars pictures, movie cars.
And voting.
And voting.
And voting.
Do that early.
From May, on May fourth, from nine to six, along Sixth Street, we're going to have beautiful classic hot bras that you can buy and sweep for the owners and take photos. We've got a couple of bars that are running specials throughout the day to participate at Sixth Street businesses, so we're excited about that. Please come out, take pictures, send them to Jennifer, so she can post them on our channels. We'd love to see that participation. Another big thing coming up next week is an open house for the Galveston LNG Bar and Board Potential Project National Point. That's taking place at the Nestler Center on Wednesday, May eighth, from four thirty to seven PM. Please come by if you have any questions about that project. The representatives would love to answer them, and we're just very excited for this potential change in the city.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Mr. Harris?
Yes, just one thing. Just wanted to announce this weekend also, on May fourth, will be the brand open of the outdoor Nestler Family Aquatic Center. It will be open on Saturday and Sunday weekends only until June, and the hours are from ten AM to six.
So, lemonade, swimming, what do, what do we got to do? Yeah, you can vote in between each thing you do.
No shortage of things to do Saturday in Texas City. No shortage of uh, things to do Saturday in Texas City. Mr. Harris, can you give us a quick update on the uh, outdoor fitness station at the Carver Park? Is that, the status of that?
Yes, sir. Uh, that project uh, finished up about two weeks ago. Uh, currently, we are waiting on whether we can pour a five-foot sidewalk to get to it. So right now, with the rain we had, it's pretty soggy to get there to it. Uh, but the sidewalk will tie into going toward our toward the basketball court. And so that way, as, as our walkers walk the trail, they can just keep on walking it. But it's currently being used, and so we're gonna deny this usage, cause it's ready to go.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Well, since y'all have anything to do on Saturday. Saint John Church and Salvation groups are hoping to get Goddard Park painted, uh, all the fences and all the stuff that didn't get painted by the contractor.
Go buy, buy him some lemonade from her and then take him to them.
Anyone else?
I'll just add, real quick. Because the polling place is open at seven AM, so that's what you can do first. Before you volunteer or buy a lemonade or touch a car or watch a movie. Is, we have three polling locations located in Texas City, so that's Nestler, Carver, or the um, county building, which is. Out off of Emmett F. Lowery, next to the police substation. Seven AM to seven PM, voting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, also wanna announce real quick, um, on Saturday, May eleventh. Uh, we will have the Keep Texas City Beautiful Campaign Community Cleanup. Ms. T T Smith, along with uh, several other, uh, Ms. Patricia Moda, do I see her here? No? Okay, our Community Development Department is working diligently to do our second uh, partnership community cleanup with the city of Lamarck. We will be cleaning up these seventeen sixty-five corridor from um, High, State Highway Three all the way down to like, I forty-five. So it's, it's pretty good ways, and we appreciate the assistance of Recreation and Tourism, of our Sanitation Department, of Public Works, and. Everybody just comes out and leans a big hand. I believe last year, we had close to sixty people out there volunteering, and uh, we expect to uh. Match and surpass those numbers this year between the volunteers from both cities, so it's a great, great opportunity to come out and volunteer. That's May eleventh, not May fourth. May eleventh, while we will be participating in that. Uh, one last pitch for the city. Absolutely, absolutely. Last year, we were walking on shrubs and grass and things like that, now we have sidewalks. Thank you, Commissioner Bowie, for that effort. Yes, on both sides of the street too, so, thank you. If there's nothing else, we will.
Motion to adjourn.
We will adjourn. Thank you very much.